Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the October 13th City Commission meeting for the city of Marquette. If we could rise and please pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini.
Here.
Commissioner Combenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana.
Here.
Mayor Coyne.
Here. A motion to excuse Commissioner Frazier would be in order. Commissioner Baldini.
I'll move.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Okay, that motion passes. The next item is a note of agenda changes. I would like to move item number nine, which is the appointment of a new city manager, up to item number five, and we'll make five, the one that's five, make that five A. Any other changes at all? Seeing none, a motion to approve. The motion has changed. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move the agenda be approved as presented, as amended.
Is there support? Commissioner Connolly?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay. All those opposed? No? Okay. Announcements? I have a couple of announcements. We've had an outstanding week for people volunteering for boards and committees, and we still have a lot of vacancies, but a lot of people are stepping up and volunteering, and we would encourage you to look on the website to see what committees and boards there are and what vacancies there are. You can also apply online then to... And another announcement is that the city received a certificate for excellence in financial reporting. That was through the Financial Services Department, and this is really an outstanding award. On behalf of the commission, I want to thank the group who put that together, and we pretty much every year get this award, so they do a very good job. We're very proud of you, so thank you. The next is the presentations, and if Emily Gooch and her family could come up to that place right there. Emily, we're very proud every time we have to do this, and we're presenting you a youth leadership award for outstanding volunteers' work at the U.P. Children's Museum as guardian of wow. And we really congratulate you for a great job, and we're very proud of you. So I'm going to give you that, and give that to your assistant here, the brother, who was giving me such a hard time earlier. Come on up here. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but if you'd like to?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And every time we do this, one person always has something to say, and that would be Mr. Jim. So come on up, Mr. Jim, and what do you have to say, time?
This is Emily. She's an eighth grader at Bothwell Middle School. She hasn't been at the museum for a year yet, but she's shown a maturity way beyond her years. This will be a leader. She organizes the museum, she organizes the animals, she organizes the people in the museum, but what we're starting tonight is a dynasty. Do you say dynasty or dynasty? Depends whether it's from someone...
In America here, we say dynasty.
Okay. So we're making a dynasty, and so we have Tucker, and we have Jess, and this is...
And Alex.
And Alex.
No, Tucker's...
Sorry. Alex. We know each other through scouts, but we all know each other through the museum, and I think we'll go from person to person as the years go on, so you can look forward to seeing these two here one day, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay?
And I know your family's very proud of you, and thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Reynolds always makes cupcakes, and it was all I could do not to eat those because they look so good, so enjoy. You have to share them with these two guys, though. Okay? Thank you. The next item is Chairperson David Brooks is going to give us an update on the Board of Review. David, if you could come up there, and after your presentation, we may have some questions for you.
Thank you. My name is David Brooks. I'm the chairperson for the Board of Review for the city taxes. Our board's made up of five members. And what I'd like to mention, since you brought up the fact that I'm leaving out volunteers for different organizations or portions or places in the community, we have, one of our members will be leaving as of February, and we have another one who may also be leaving, so I would encourage you, if you know of people that would be willing to serve on the Board of Review, to have them contact the offices and put their application in. Our board is appointed by the City Commission. Right now, we have five members as called for, and it's an interesting background of people from all works of, or areas of life, I guess. We have people who are, have been in mortgage banking, realtor, or I think two of them have been in realty, educators, and what we're looking for is people to continue that, so we have a diverse group of people to do the work. Miles Anderson is the city assessor, and if there are any other questions, we can talk later, but here's the proposals and goals. I'd like you to just kind of take a quick look at those. The Michigan compiled laws are what require the board to be available, to be the, go between, between the people of the city and the tax, taxing organization. It also mentions here that we have a few different meetings. March, Board of Review is specifically to property owners protesting valuations and classifications. July and December mainly for corrections of clerical errors, also other principal resumption, or resident exemptions that need to be appealed, and then at all the meetings, we can consider the poverty exemptions and veterans exemptions, and appreciate our veterans very much, and good to see them when they come in to take care of business. Property tax appeal procedures. We have limitations on the board, and if you can look here, you can see that there's certain things that we can do, where we have authority to review things, to look it over, look at the taxes, see what people are requesting. We don't require, we don't do anything unless somebody asks for a change in their taxes or has concern about their taxes. Obviously, people ask to have them reduced, but not to be increased. At least, we haven't had anybody ask to have them increased. 2015 property tax appeal procedures, again showing our limitations. As a Board of Review, mainly July and December for a principal resident exemption that was not on previous years can be taken care of. Other than that, we have, again, limitations that we can take care of. Components of taxable value, kind of gives you an idea of where the taxable values are by the various property classes. Residential makes up just slightly over 51% of that. Components of the assessed value, state equalized the value by property classes, and again, residential makes up just over 50%, about 53% of that. The parcel counts by class, residential 61% of the taxes are from residential, and the others vary considerably. Commercial is 16%, and followed on down the board there. The exempt, exempt parcels include such things as, pardon me, religious, nonprofit, city or council properties, or, I'm sorry, county or city properties. Certain other real properties are also not included in the tax and are exempt from it. March Board of Petitions, which is a major time that we look at the taxes, as you can see, has considerably increased over the last few years. In 2010, we had 51 petitions, 2011, 79, 2012, 64, 2013, 68. In 2014, it went up to 20, 180, and last year it just, or this past year here, it just dropped to 124. But I'm sure that has a lot to do with people's finances and really looking to try and save on their taxes, you know, and trying to find every loophole that they can, but with us, it's a matter of looking at the, looking at the records, looking at what they bring to us to petition lower tax. As far as the Board of Review and our place, we're kind of the people that are between the taxpayer and the assessor. Our, our deal is to help people to, if they can be helped, but yet to help them to understand if they're being taxed for a reason, why they're being taxed for that. We ask people when they come in to bring in all the evidence they have if they think their taxes are too high, and we look at it, we take time to measure everything, compare it to other properties if it needs to be, look at it. Sometimes people come in and say, "Well, gee, I haven't had that garage there for 10 years, and it's still being assessed." And we can look at that and find out what's happened and when it was removed, to try and balance things out. Our job is, again, you know, we want to work for the people. We want to work for the city. We want to help as needed to keep everyone happy with their taxes. You know, we're the kind of people with what we do, if we don't agree with someone, we're rolled, but when we agree with them, they like us, so with the, you know, so it's an interesting position to be in. Some general information, again, depending on the year, sometimes it's a lot of work to do, and it takes us a lot of hours to sit and really go over all the work. There are some things that have changed in the past couple of years, dealing with personal property taxes, several acts, manufacturer's law this year coming in, Small Business Association, or Small Business Administration, excuse me. If you have a business, a small business, and under $80,000 in personal property, there's an exemption for you. So there's a lot of things that keep changing we have to try and keep up with. We do go to programs that are put on by the state to, to find out what the new laws are and how they apply to our area, to our city, to our, our taxing. Some, a number of the large taxable value properties have appealed their assessments to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and if they don't agree with what, what we have set and what the assessor has set, they can go to the Tax Tribunal and, and ask to have a hearing there. Any more information, again, it'd be good to talk to Miles on that. Okay. Kind of went through this quickly, but you know, there's so much in there, and there's, there's enough there to, to give you, I think, a good foothold of what we do. Is there any questions that we can, with a comment at this time?
Commissioners? Commissioner Baldini?
Yes, a couple of comments. You had on your one chart, in 2015, you said there was 1.2 million in question. What is your average a year? I mean, not approximately.
Oh, I couldn't even tell you because it's something we wouldn't have done in the, on the board. That would have to be something you'd have to talk to.
Okay. And then you, you also mentioned that between 2014 and 2000, I think, and 13, there were 68 challenges, and then 180. I mean, that's a 100% increase, more than that.
More than that.
Yeah. And what, and you felt it was due to maybe the economy?
I'm guessing it's due to the economy, people saying, "Gee, I want to save on my taxes. I need to save some money somewhere." You know, that's my guess, is I, you know, best I can say, but we, that, that was a big increase.
Because the economy was sort of improving by then, but...
Yeah. It was a little time.
A significant jump.
Oh, it is, yeah, and it was a lot more work, too. It took a lot of time. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
Dave, a couple of questions. You said some, there were some large corporations that went to the Tax Tribunal. Did they go through the Board of Review first, or did they go...
Yes.
They did go through?
Yes. With the large corporations, they, what they did is they, they bring it to us, we look at it, we have to look at what the assessor's come up with, and we have to figure, you know, in our case, for a small city, there's not a lot of comparisons to say, okay, you know, where do we get our numbers from? So we have to look further out, but yeah, we have, they come through us first, and if they don't like what we come up with after agreeing with the assessor, or saying, well, there may be a small adjustment here, then they go to the tribunal.
One more question. If a residence has his home, his property, and he's wondering, how is it getting assessed? Is there a place where they can go and see if, you know, what checklist of, well, they have me down for having a garage, or do they have me down a developed dormer?
Sure.
Specifically, can you find those things out somewhere?
That would be here at this, at the offices of the assessor, yes.
At the office of the assessor, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other? Commissioner Connolly?
Well, I want to thank you for serving on the board, and particularly the spirit of balance that you seem to, to show, and the empathy you have with citizens, and also the awareness of the city's needs, too, and so thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Seeing none, another thank you very much, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you very much for giving us this time, and we appreciate it.
Appreciate your serving. The next item on the agenda is the retirement of Police Chief Michael Angeli, and I'm going to present him a certificate of presentation, present him a certificate of appreciation. Mike, could you come over to that there? Well, Mike, it's a pleasure to present this to you, but it's also sad because you've done such a great job for the city. One of your, the acting chief of police helped us put together kind of a biography of you, and I'm going to read it because it really shows the tremendous service you've done to this community, so if you'll bear with me while I read it. Okay. Mike began his career with the Marquette City Police Department in 1976. He served as a police support officer, patrol officer, and marine officer until his promotion to the Detective Bureau as the school liaison slash corporal in 1987. He later was upgraded to the position of Detective Sergeant, school liaison in 1989. In October of 1998, Mike was promoted to the position of Detective Lieutenant, and later Captain of the detectives in January of 2011. In 2008, Mike was appointed Acting Chief, and in July of the same year, he assumed the role of Chief of Police for the Marquette City Police Department. Mike is a graduate of Marquette Senior High School and Northern Michigan University, where he received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in business management. He's a graduate of the Northern Michigan University Regional Police Academy. He also is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, Central Michigan University Law Enforcement Executive Leadership Institute, and the Lake Superior Leadership Academy. He has served on numerous boards and committees, including the Marquette Area Public School Board, the Marquette Chapter of the American Red Cross, the Marquette County Law Enforcement Administrators Association, of which he was the chair, the Upper Peninsula Substance Enforcement Team Board, of which he was the chair, Catholic Social Services. He also co-chaired the Marquette County United Way for the past two years. In 1997, Mike was voted the Marquette County Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, and also received in 1998, the Marquette Area Public Schools Board of Education Outstanding Service Award. Mike has been an active Michigan High School Athletic Association football official for the past 41 years, and this I have a little trouble with. It says, "He's never, ever, ever made a bad call," and I got a couple of phone calls from coaches and some players over the past 41 years, and he still maintains that he's never made a bad call. He's been an active member of St. Louis the King Catholic Church, where he's also the head fish fryer. For the past 32 years, Mike has been happily married to his wife Kay, and they have two children, a son, Mike, and a daughter, Catherine. Mike contributes his success of 39 years of service to the city of Marquette, to a strong family support system, which included his late father, Mike Angeli Senior, and his mother, who is with us today, along with in-laws who are retired, and particularly retired Detective Lieutenant Joe Levandowski and his wife Barb. So Mike is with pleasure and a great honor to give you this certificate of appreciation and thanking you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community for so long and so well. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Well...
Thank you to everybody. I certainly appreciate the recognition, and you know as well as I do that I probably would have stuck around for another 40 years if I wasn't asked to do the city manager's job, and I certainly appreciate that opportunity as well. I don't know why this came up, but I, when I, when you were reading that, I couldn't help but think that Commissioner Baldini was a teacher of mine when I was in high school, and that was many, many years ago, so we can only imagine how old he really is. So, anyway, I've enjoyed the, the service that I've been able to provide for this community, and I remember when you appointed me chief, and you were on the commission back then in 2008, and I made the comment that your community is my community, and I still feel the same way, and if I become the city manager, it still will be that same attitude, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. I just, I want you to know that Tom brought his gradebook from when you were in class, and during public comment, he'll probably review that, and what a great student you were.
Oh, you know what I was, when I was awake, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Now is the time for public comment. For those of you who've not been here for public comment, you have three minutes to speak. This light system here will go on green when you start, yellow when you have one minute, and red will start flashing in 30 seconds, and then when it's on all the time, your three minutes are up. When you come up, please state your name, address, and city or township of residence, and also, if you wish to speak on an agenda item, please say so, and we'll put your name down so you can speak on that agenda item. So please come forward to here if you wish to make public comment.
I've, I've been up here a few times, and every time I give my name and address, and Mr. Coyne, you asked me last time what my city was.
Excuse me, could you set the time? Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you.
The last time I also came up here, you told me that you appreciated the Constitution here in the, in the chambers. I'd like to know how we are limited to three minutes of time, and we, we are never acknowledged. There are many times that public speakers will come up, give you their opinion, give us an idea to think about, and we are very neglected, I guess is the bottom line of it, and I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm criticizing for everything that you guys do. You guys do a lot of great work, and everybody has done tremendous work over the years, but the first words I heard you say, Mr. Coyne, was, "I don't like you." Those were your, your quote to a pair of developers that were building Founders Landing. It proceeded into, you asked for a motion to cancel the contract with those developers. We now have a big hole in the ground by developers that you've promoted precisely because the concerns the previous developers had, and they brought up to us in the commission, was what you didn't like about their plan. So we now have a big hole in the ground that's been developed, which was basically stated as the other developers had told us our soil wasn't really right for the development we were asking for down there. That's old news, okay? That's, that's kind of old, but it goes to the stage of, Mr. Angeli, congratulations on, on retiring as police chief. However, I would rather have you not retire as police chief. I think you're doing a fantastic job downstairs. I'd like to see you continue it. So my real question comes down to, what are we, are we going to search for a new city manager? No offense, but I was hoping this was a temporary job. Are we going to search for a new city manager, or are we searching for a new police chief? We have, we have some openings that occur because of this move, and that's, that's the way it works, okay? I understand that. But it, it does go into, with your long list of accolades, it goes into this whole cronyism concept that if, if we promote things because we like them, are we doing a disservice to the rest of the city because it costs time and effort for a bunch of other things? Did we choose Duke Life Point Hospital setting because we liked them, or that we took, or we sent commissioners down to their headquarters? By the way, I was going to ask you this, Mr. Angeli. Cronyism isn't illegal, but is, is predetermined motions, and who's going to ask for them illegal? Because I've, I've done some records, and by the way, the microphone thing that another speaker brings up is very important because there are many times that we, as citizens, can't make it to these meetings for these three minutes, and we watch them on YouTube or on the TV.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up.
I'm going to keep talking, though, please.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address, which you did not do when you started, so who are you?
Right, because I'm, I've been up a few times, and that's my point. If you can't remember who we are...
Who are you?
Then we are speaking to...
So you, sit down.
My last appointment, my last statement is to the microphone aspect of...
Attorney of honor, would you make him please sit down?
Closed captioning does not pick up motions in seconds if the microphones are not on, so there are many times that we cannot hear...
Sit down.
I will. There are many times we cannot hear what is spoken if your microphones are not on. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak?
The red light's on now. Frank Jeffverdo, 350 East Ridge, to speak on item 10. These are my opinions. October 2nd, our downtown reeked of exhaust. Two Asians, I assume visitors, positioned masks over their faces for protection. How embarrassing. What is this, the new Beijing? The last two things I moved here for were to choke on exhaust so often and to defame an elderly man. My September 28th comment is not on video or in the minutes. You've been reminded endlessly to have this mic on. Someone's got to be tripping to space out that many times. You're asked to, in your closing comment, to extend me three extra minutes next time to record that comment verbatim, or else you care less about our public record. For three months, we've noted your denial by omission of your threat against me. Why the big lie over such a little matter? You also lied your first night here with that equal person nonsense, which seemed sincere at the time, but proved bogus. You lied again July 13th when you said you wouldn't support the Clark Park Agreement if that beachfront is not made public. Plus, you stole our closing comment. Your message is that it's okay to lie to the police. The new chief and Mike are asked to ask you directly if... The new chief and Mike are asked to ask you directly if you made the said threat. That way, you can't walk around the truth with your fake fatherly spiel. You walked into the men's room, harassed me as detailed on record, and followed me out, having conducted no other business there. If you think you're going to lie and saunter out of here unscathed, you'd best fess up tonight before the comments are started for your last meeting thirteen nights from now. Most despicable is that by not confessing, you laid the seed of public doubt that I concocted your bizarre threat, thereby questioning people's trust in me. Let's take lie detector tests, so the truth may prevail. Your avoidance of my previous requests strongly suggests your guilt. You had nerve to ask me on August 10th to respect you as a person. That's exactly what I don't respect you as. You're dishonest. What makes you think you deserve respect? I mean, how dare you create a situation where someone's up here putting himself on the line this way? In four weeks, I'll still be speaking, but you'll be gone, because to date, you're too good to serve here unless you're paid. So long as I'm alive, your lies and the way you play on people's sympathies will never be forgotten. The chief said my account, as repeated August 31st, coincides with what I told him two minutes after your threat. There was no time to imagine or concoct that you swore at and threatened me. Why did you lie to Mike instead of telling him the truth and getting it over with back then? Why did you lie to Mike, Mike? I bet my life on it. Would you? Bet yours? What we're witnessing is sheer cowardice and your utter failure to man up. Why did you lie to Mike, Mike? I stand here for twenty-four more seconds asking you. Why did you lie to him? Aren't you friends? Would you lie to your friend? And say all these nice things about him up here? No? I mean, you're sick with arrogance.
Bob Kinbenzy to speak on item 10.
Yor Malankin, 8 Marquette Drive. And I don't mind giving my address, or my name, or my location. It's only fair. Unfortunately, I missed last meeting, and it didn't make any difference by the sounds of the article in the Mining Journal. And as of yesterday, for whatever reason, the recording of the meeting was not on the Internet. At least, I could not see it. I wanted to listen to it. As we all realize, we have many parks in our community, and now we have one more. My disappointment doesn't matter, but to the citizens of this community, it does matter because they have come up to me, because they don't have the courage to come up here and talk. They've kind of used me as their spokesperson by referring to the Clark's Landing, Clark's Park, which went through with many, many concerns that you, as the commissioners, had in July meeting. And then, last meeting, all of those were not taken into consideration in its entirety as was requested by, as I mentioned earlier, a bullying individual. And perhaps you looked at it as a rude business person. Depends on how you interpret that type of behavior. It's not acceptable, far as I'm concerned. But as an individual in the community, I am disappointed that none of those concerns were pointed or followed through in the decision that was made a couple of weeks ago on that park decision. I do want to congratulate Mr. Angelie for being such a dedicated service person in our community for so, so many years, and for having the courage, which I'm assuming he will be the new city manager today. And it takes a lot of courage and gumption, and I thank you for doing that for us. And thank you for everything you do. I'm not trying to add on to the criticism here, but the opinions of the community really were not listened, as another park was added to our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to move forward? Any other wanting to pose a public comment?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Commissioner Campana. Support that. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes. We're now going to take up item number nine, which is the appointment of a new city manager under unfinished business. Madam Clerk, could you read the agenda item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. At its September 14th, 2015 meeting, the commission approved offering the city manager position to Acting City Manager L. Michael Angelie, and to take the necessary steps to negotiate a mutually acceptable employment agreement. At the same meeting, the commission approved the appointment of Mayor Coyne, Mayor Protem Campana, and Commissioner Baldini to conduct the negotiations with Mr. Angelie. Those negotiations have been successfully concluded and contain the following essential terms and conditions: A base salary of $115,000 per year, life insurance of $50,000, a $6,000 car allowance, and the same fringe benefit package as the city department heads. Fiscal effect: Sufficient funds are available in fiscal year 2015/16 budget for the position. Recommendation: Appoint L. Michael Angelie as the city manager and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract for his employment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding this agenda item? Commissioner Conley.
I move that we appoint L. Michael Angelie as the city manager and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract for his employment.
Is there a support to that? Commissioner Reynolds.
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Conley?
Well, he's been doing a great job so far. And, really. And we want to see him continue. And we thank him for stepping up and continuing his service to the city.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, I echo Commissioner Conley. And with, you know, our city manager stepping down previously, I'm happy to have that we have somebody in here that wants to do the job, number one. Number two, that we have somebody doing it so quickly when we have so many things going on. I can't imagine trying to find somebody to fill the shoes so quickly. Since Mike's caught up to speed, I'm happy that even on our agenda later on, we have stuff that he already has gotten done. So, I'm just happy about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just a comment. If this motion passes, he will start as the new city manager on October 19th. He will be out of town on that day, so we wanted to do it now. What?
Two-year contract.
Two-year contract. Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, and congratulations. I guess we can't call you city manager until October 19th, correct? And now, we're going to swear you in.
Is this a good idea?
Can you hear me, Frank?
I'm L. Michael Angelie.
Hi, L. Michael Angelie.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of...
City manager for the City of Marquette.
City manager for the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mike, thank you very much for being willing to serve, and congratulations. And thank for the family for coming and honoring him. Appreciate that. Yes? Sure.
Well, I realize that I neglected, in my retirement speech, to recognize my family that's here, and I didn't want to go home tonight, unless I did that. So, I wanted to point out that my wife Kay is here, my mother Rita is here, and my son, Mike III, officially known as Mike the Turd.
Oh, God.
And his girlfriend Lauren. And without their support and love and everything else, I wouldn't be able to be where I am today. So, thank you, folks, for coming.
Well, thank you. I think that shows his political savvy, doing that, because Eva's giving you the stink eye there for...
I want her to be done.
Okay. Thank you. The next item would be 5A. Madam Clerk, could you read the agenda item 5A, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. At its meeting on July 27th, 2015, the City Commission adopted a further amendment to policy number 2001, which governs appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees. On September 28th, 2015, the City Commission directed the city attorney to further revise the policy with respect to Section 3 member terms and bring it back to the commission for consideration. Fiscal effect: Nonviolence action. Recommendation: Approve the attached City Commission Policy number 2002-01 as amended, governing city boards, commissions, and committees. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Campana.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached City Commission Policy 2002-01 as amended, governing city boards, commissions, and committees.
Is there a support? Commissioner Conley.
Support.
Commissioner Campana. Any discussion?
I know we've talked about this many times and at length. I would like to ask the city attorney for clarification, if not for myself, but for others. What this means is a person can serve on two committees, of course. If they're on one committee, they can serve no more than six years. When they are done with that sixth year on that Committee A, can they immediately go to Committee B and serve on that for another six years?
That's how I read the charter. They can't go back to the same committee they've served on. There's a two-year waiting period. But as I see the charter, they can go onto another committee.
Thank you.
Anything further? Commissioner Campana.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Conley.
This puts the commission policy in line with the charter and clarifies it in that regard. So, I think this is going to be a good thing and take away some of the uncertainty that has prevailed over the last five years over this issue.
Just a point of clarification. There is one board that is a five-year term. You can... The library board is five years, and you can serve two five-year terms. So that's... I don't know how that got in there, but that is the way it is. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Two no's, four yeses. Excuse me.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Two no's and four yeses?
Yes. I got ahead of myself there. Now, we're going to item number six, which is a closed session pursuant to Michigan MCL 15.268D to consult with its attorney regarding the municipal service center relocation property purchase. So, a motion to go into closed session? I'm sorry. What?
Just for a point of clarification, it takes a two-thirds roll call vote.
Okay. I couldn't understand why you were waving at me. So, okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to proceed with going into closed session? Commissioner Reynolds.
I move that we go into closed session.
Commissioner Baldini? Any discussion?
None.
Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of going into closed session? Okay. By roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinbenzy?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Yes.
Mayor Coyne?
Yes. So, we will go into the conference room and be back when we're done. Correct? Okay. Thank you. A motion to approve coming out of closed session would be appropriate. Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we come out of closed session.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Okay? Now, is there a motion as a result of the planning, I mean, of the closed session? Commissioner Conley.
I move that the commission accept the essential terms for the purchase of property owned by Northern Michigan University and located at 1100 Wright Street in the city of Marquette, as set forth in a letter from the university dated October 12, 2015, and direct the city attorney to work with NMU Legal Counsel to draft a purchase agreement for the commission's consideration at its October 26, 2015 meeting.
Is there a support to that? Commissioner Baldini?
I'll support that motion.
Commissioner Conley, any further comments?
No further comments.
Commissioner Baldini? Any other comments? Seeing no other comments? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we move on. Madam Clerk, could you read item number 10? Agenda item number 10.
At the regular meeting of February 9th, 2015, the City Commission approved the selection of a design build team consisting of Gunlock Champion Inc. and Fishbeck Thompson Car and Huber Inc. from Iron Mountain, Michigan, and Grand Rapids, Michigan, respectively, for the design and construction of the new municipal service center, and authorized staff and the city attorney to negotiate a detailed scope of services. The project design will be done in two phases. Phase one, the preliminary design stage, will include the final conceptual design of the building and of the site plan. A bid package will be issued for the site work, foundations, precast, and steel. A budget will be developed for city administrative approval. Phase two will include production of construction documents, bidding of the remaining work items, and development of the guaranteed maximum price, GMP. The next city commission approval will be the GMP for construction. Fiscal effect: Of the $500,000 expense deposit explained in the Duke Life Point purchase agreement for the current municipal service center, an amount of $350,000, has been earmarked and is available for Phase One Design Services. The money for the Phase Two Design Services will be available upon closing when the Brownfield Project money is available. Recommendation: Approve the Phase One Preliminary Design Contract negotiated with Design Build Team, DVT, consisting of Gunlock Champion Inc. and Fishbeck Thompson Car and Huber Inc. in an amount not to exceed $350,000, and approve the Phase Two Design Services contingent upon the closing of the current municipal service center site in an amount not to exceed $490,000 from the Brownfield Project funds. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Two members of the public wish to speak. Mr. Verito?
Still writing the comment because we didn't have information until now. Frank Jeff Ericso, 350 East Ridge. These are my opinions. Marquette. No supplement was provided for your closed session meeting on the property purchase, so we had no idea until now which property was being negotiated. we had no idea until now which property was being negotiated. There was also no mention of the location on the agenda itself or in the supplement for this item. How are we expected to prepare effective comments? And worse yet, how many times have you run the public through this exact same merger mural? What's strange is that the contractors prepared pages worth of documents on a standard design build agreement and general conditions without knowing the location, or were they privy to that information before the rest of us? Your management's own recommendation on the agenda supplement is, quote, "to approve the phase one preliminary design contract negotiated with the contractors in an amount not to exceed $350,000," and approve the phase two design services contingent upon closing for the current municipal service center site in an amount not to exceed $490,000 from the Brownfield project funds. It seems to a layman that the site selection could impact the site prep and construction costs. Most concerning is that the construction is set to begin May 2, 2016, only a month after we've had, we had to have vacated the existing facility. No one to date has been willing to tell us how the logistics of all this are possible. Perhaps no one can because it seems almost humanly impossible. Tonight, you decided upon the Wright Street site before the public was offered a chance to comment. You ignored concerns that every vehicle that leaves the center will need to cross a dangerous street. In a dangerous street that isn't probably one of the most inaccessible or least central locations in town.
Mr. Kimbensey, you wish to speak?
Bob Kimbensey, 306 North Sixth Street, and I guess now we know that we're probably going to get the piece of land that you were looking at before. I have absolutely no problem with the design build firm. I think they've proven in many projects that they do a real good job. However, when you look at their design schedule that's included in your packet, they will start their design on November 2, 2015, and they will be ready with the plans and the bids and everything, bid package, and to start construction on May 2, 2016, which is 17 days after we're supposed to move out of our existing service center. Then I went back and I looked at the purchase agreement that was signed on August 3 at a rather quickly called meeting, and there is a item in there, subparagraph M on page six. Buyer and seller shall have agreed upon a form of lease agreement, the post-closing lease whereby seller, the city, as tenant, now, we're going to lease back our existing service center, I guess, pay rent on it, shall lease from buyer as landlord the property for a period of time. The post-closing lease shall provide that seller, again, the city as tenant, shall be obligated to pay rent to buyer as landlord in an amount to be agreed to between the buyer and seller. Buyer and seller shall execute and deliver to the other the post-closing lease at closing. So I guess it would seem to me that, pretty quick, maybe somebody needs to sit down with the Duke Life Point people to talk about that lease, because we're not going to start building the new service center until May, and we're supposed to be out of our existing one 17 days before that. So we've got a little time problem there.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion regarding this agenda item? Commissioner Campana?
Okay, I move that we approve the phase one preliminary design contract negotiated with the design build team consisting of Gunlock Champion and Fishbeck Thompson Car and Huber Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $350,000, and approve the phase two design services contingent upon the closing for the current municipal service center site in an amount not to exceed $490,000 from the Brownfield project funds.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any comments or discussion?
I think that we need to approve this in order to keep the project moving. We're a little behind, to say the least, and we need, we just have to do this now or we're going to not be making any progress. We need this to be done now. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing really further to add. We do, we do need to get this going, and I, I do see the concerns that, you know, Mr. Kimbensey brought up, and I think that our city manager is trying to flesh out those things, and I think that they're not going to run into a problem. I'm sure he will address those things in due time to the public, but that is all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Campana?
I would be voting no on this, but for the record, could you please show that I do support the design build team as well as our city staff that is working hard on this? My no vote is not a reflection of disapproval of their work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Five to one. Okay, that concludes the agenda. It's now time for...
Your honor, we have two other items.
What, pardon me?
Two other items, seven and eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped, yeah. New business, we have two items. Madam Clerk, could you read number seven?
Thank you, sir. Background, Mayor Protem Dave Campana and Commissioner Mike Conley attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Traverse City September 16 through 18, 2015. The following checks will reimburse, will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Protem Dave Campana, check 66937 for $165.54. Commissioner Mike Conley, check 66986 for $383.45. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $548.99. Adequate funds are available within fiscal year 2015 city commission travel budget. Recommendation approve travel reimbursement from Mayor Protem Campana in the amount of $165.54, and Commissioner Conley in the amount of $383.45 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner Baldini?
I move we approve the travel reimbursements from Mayor Protem Campana in the amount of $165.54, and Commissioner Conley in the amount of $383.45 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Support.
Any discussion further?
Perhaps you want to give us your little speech that you usually do, unless, your honor, about why we're doing it this fashion again?
Well, because these, the two commissioners have to abstain from this vote, and they were on the consent agenda, and this, I think, is just a cleaner way to do it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
No, and then abstentions, two abstain. Okay? Would you, Madam Clerk, please read item number eight, then?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Commissioner Sarah Kimbensey and Commissioner Sarah Reynolds attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Traverse City September 16 through 18, 2015. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Sarah Kimbensey, check 67003 for $517.45. Commissioner Sarah Reynolds, check 67004 for $70.62. Fiscal effects, total travel costs are $588.07. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2015 city commission travel budget. Recommendation approve the travel reimbursements for Commissioner Kimbensey in the amount of $517.45, and Commissioner Reynolds in the amount of $70.62 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Commissioner Kimbensey in the amount of $517.45, and Commissioner Reynolds in the amount of $70.62 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Commissioner Conley?
Support.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Now, we're at the point of commissioner comments. Commissioner Reynolds?
Oh, well, sorry, was not ready. All right. It seems to me that so far, Mike seems to be doing a good job. I'm sure that in the public's eye, we'll be seeing stuff at our next meeting with what our closed session was on, and I think that that will prove true as well. I had a chance to go down to Berge Fest last, this weekend, and it's turning into something really quite great, despite, you know, it's starting to get a little chillier out. It was 70 degrees, bunch of people dancing around, having beer. There was a mechanical bull even, and I've seen like five people fall off, which was fantastic. But just other things that our DDA does that are wonderful. And the only other thing that I, I could, the same thing Yorma brought up earlier with the meeting online, I couldn't find it because I was particularly looking for something, so I was just wondering, maybe I was missing it too, maybe it just wasn't at the top of the page, but if somebody could check into that, that'd be great.
I, I found it on the website, the city website.
I went to YouTube, but I didn't, it didn't pop up, but...
Yeah, okay, it's on there. Commissioner Baldini?
I also went down to the Berge Street Fall Fest, which was well-attended, and I think it's a thing that's, that's come along and it's going to stay on the, on the radar screen for the city. I, I think tonight we made, we took some more steps forward. There's still a lot, there are exciting challenges, and I, and I do think we have to, don't think, I know we have to thank the city manager for really moving this, this process forward. And also, I would like to mention that I do have major responsibilities as a commissioner on Saturday. There's an apple pie testing contest at Farmer's Mark. Somebody has to do it to represent the commission, and I volunteer, so I just want to let you know.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to echo, Harvest Fest on Berge was great, and I think the kids, the children there were having the best time, but adults were having a good time, too. So thanks to the DDA and the Berge Street merchants for making a successful and fun event. Again, I'd like to thank Mike Angelie. I thank him for his 39 years of service to the city and continuing on stepping up as a city manager. We look forward to continuing to work, and we understand that this is, has a mixed emotions that you're retiring from your life's work, but you're doing it for the betterment of the, of the city, the whole community, and, and thank you for doing that. And if the last month that you've been on the job is any indication, you're going to do really great. We have really appreciated. There's been a real difference in how things have been done, and we really appreciate it. I'd also like to point out to folks that on October 15, that's two nights from now here in Commission Chambers, and a week later, on October 22, at 5:30 PM, the Board of Light and Power is having a forum. They're having also open houses. You can get the information from their website. I looked at it tonight. It's available. I would like you to look at that information and listen to what they're saying, and then, and then express your views. But know that we, as a commission, are looking and have asked for all the alternatives that we have cost in mind, but we also have a responsibility to look at all the alternatives and, and the risks, too. So please go to one of these forums and then let us know how you feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
I would like to congratulate Mike Angelie on his selection. I think we're very fortunate to have him. In the past month, staff and everyone else has been very pleased with what he's done, and he's already pulled us out of a hole once or twice that we were having problems, and so, so he, it's, it's going to work. It's going to work. As Commissioner Conley said, the Board of Light and Power is thinking, is planning to build the natural gas generation plant at their current office building, and I think the people should know that this is going to be a costly project, and it's going to affect their rates, and they should learn as much about it as they can. And I would encourage him, as he said, to attend the meetings. Again, it's, it's got to, it's your opinion, but it's almost got to happen, and it's going to be an increase, so you would need to know this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kimbensey?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Conley for reminding the public of the BLP forums. This is going to be a huge issue in our community and one that certainly would be nice to have more feedback than not on. We approved a emergency fix to one of our water pumps that failed this past week, $13,000. So when we approve rate increases and similar to the BLP looking ahead, we're doing this to kind of plan for the future because some of this stuff, when it breaks, or the new mandates come for clean air emissions, they put us in a position where we need to act rather fast compared to how quickly it really takes, or I guess the lack of speed it takes sometimes to get these projects done and to plan for them. So thank you for your support with both our rate increases, and please either contact us or especially the Board of Light and Power and let them know your thoughts on their plan. Thanks to Gary Simpson and all department heads, our new city manager, for the outstanding award in finance, something that I do believe that city staff takes very seriously since I've been on the commission. It's one thing I'm very impressed with is, is I guess how good we count beans in many instances. Lastly, I'd like to just thank Mike Angelie for his many years of service as a city police officer, and thank him for stepping up at a time. It's really, we've got more on our plate than I can imagine in the first three years I've been on here, and certainly in the long history of this decade. It's a very difficult time. Certainly, my no votes don't reflect, I guess, my approval and appreciation for him really solving some of these difficult problems, so I'd like to just thank him for that. That's it.
Thank you. I also want to join and say thanks, Mike, for stepping up, and I've shared this with you several times. Everywhere I go, people come up to me and say, "I'm glad you chose him because he really, I think, will do a good job." And the fact that you are so familiar with all these hot button issues, I think, really is extremely helpful, and I've had no one be critical of the, of your selection, and I, that's a feather in your cap. So thanks for being willing to do it and willing to serve. Just one other comment. To clarify the Board of Light and Power rate issue, the Board of Light and Power is responsible for running the Board of Light and Power, and they have to have the rates approved by the City Commission. And we've had a long series of meetings in this past six weeks with them to learn about their plan, and then we were confronted with the rate study that was going to be required to give the community reliability of electricity. And we asked them, I think it was the general feeling of the commission, that their reliability plan is excellent and needed, but we were very concerned about the sudden increase of rates, and we asked them to go back and look at some options to perhaps phase this in over a period of time, and they are doing that, and I, I hope they will have those rate studies if they hadn't gotten them already yesterday. And then we're going to have another meeting with them to try to work out something. And the real value of the gas-powered generators are their instant starts. You can just like push a button and you're online, and you don't have to wait 12 hours to get your lights back on. And the value of that particularly leads to the opportunity to move into wind and solar power, which has about a 40% reliability, and if the wind isn't blowing and it's dark, then if everything breaks, you don't have any electricity. But with these, you can just push a button and, you know, you'll have it. And the other thing is that with the advent of wind and solar, we will then have increased ability to grow economically because we're, we have some excess capacity, but not enough to really grow as we have grown in the past 30 years. So it's a real dilemma, but if, and as I mentioned before, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. If you don't have reliability, everybody gets mad at you because you don't have any lights if everything breaks, and you're damned if you do because then they're mad at you because you have to raise the rates, but the reliability, I mean, the reality is... But the reliable, I mean, the reality is, these are aging systems. You need better reliability, and we've got to deal with this in an effective way. One other final comment, a good shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce, which is a new organization, and three of the commissioners this last week met with the elected officials in Chalkley Township, Sands Township, and Marquette Township, no more to exceed the Open Meetings Act violation, but to sit down and get to know one another and talk about issues that are common and to really get to know other commissioners in those townships and vice versa. So you're dealing with people that you can relate to rather than not have any idea who they are, and I think in the long run, this will work to everyone's benefit, and I think the, the message I've been getting from that is this will be beneficial to all the citizens of the two, the three townships surrounding us and the city because we're also very interdependent on one another. Again, thank you, and Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you all for your support in this move in my career. I am truly touched by the fact that you have such confidence in me and, and have given me this opportunity. It certainly wasn't anything that I ever thought I would achieve, but now that I'm here, I, I do appreciate the opportunity, and I'll do the best I can for you. I don't think you have to worry. With that said, I had mentioned some time ago that I would not even have considered this job if we didn't have the staff here that I thought could give me the support that I needed to be successful. Including the city attorney who does a wonderful job for us, is great to work with, is very easy to work with when you deal with complex issues, because I think he will tell you that I'm not the smartest person around, and he doesn't, he has a great way of explaining things to me and--
You're not the smartest person?
No, I never said that. No, I said that. You didn't say that. I'm not the smartest, and you do a good job of helping me through difficult situations, is what I was trying to say. Didn't come out that way, did it? And, you know, with our, the rest of our staff, I mean, Gary Simpson, Kurt, you know, everybody that's helping work, work on this DLP project, it, it's really nice to have them on board and certainly a benefit to, to what I can accomplish. So with that said, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.